Scott, this is Mike with the District Council, trying to find your back up.
Yeah.
Yeah, the front.
Isn't every class or?
Only a class in a school that was.
We didn't pause.
I just feel we're driving. I know. I'm running across my. That's why I should be taking the big.
You settle it down.
Yeah. Watch. We need to try and change. When you do a still there's locals. Yeah. And then the shirt. I think that's really confusing. Well, who's not? Right. They should know. Well, we believe it's unique. We have this. Yeah. I don't have any. And. So we got. Just see that. I look at the screen. There's no exception would. Okay. Thanks for your. That is kind of. But that's. So, you know, I don't know. I just started. We need to stand. I want this. I'm glad you're here. I never know how long it is. I'm hot drunk now. I'm going to mention that. You know, when you. The world is so tired of you.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you for coming into this meeting, taking time after your day to do so. If I would like to have meeting get started, if I could. I'd like to know is there a motion to adopt this agenda?
What's her meaning?
Oh, I'm sorry. Play the lead. Yes. I play the lead. It's to the blood. Oh, yeah. I'd say it's very important. And that's to agree about the wishes, yes. Why nation under God. Give him the full. Whether it's. Okay, next thing on order, I hear a motion to adopt our agenda.
Oh, so maybe.
To adopt. You, you motioned. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we've been moved and seconded. Seconded that the adoption of the agenda be accepted. We have one public comment from Mr. Higgins. Um, if I may, before you start, I just want you to know that the board welcomes your public input. But we ask that you model your behavior to that that we hope to see in our students. We encourage speakers to consider their words carefully and refrain from personally directed discriminatory abusive or obscene language or complaints regarding any, any individual staff member or student. The board president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement if the allotted time of three minutes has expired or if the student privacy is violated. Public comment period is not a time for dialogue between the board and the public. But to align with the public, open public meeting act, the board will not respond to statements, questions, or challenges during uh, public comment period. There will be no back and forth dialogue. Please note, the board silence is neutral and signifies they are listening to that public.
Right here, this podium or?
Yes, the podium.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, my name is Brian Higgins. I don't live in Quincy. I live in Wannachy and I teach the Wannachy School District. But I'm a graduate from Quincy High School, class of nineteen ninety eight. Um, so I have a lot of connection and love for Quincy. And I am currently directing Quincy Valley Allied Arts Production of Bright Star at uh, High School Auditorium. And what I wanted to do is just come tonight and make sure that people in Quincy and especially the board are personally invited to see this musical. It's a fantastic uh, musical that I think connects very strongly to a lot of the values that we all um, think are very important that I think uh, have been a big part of the Quincy community ever since I moved here back in nineteen ninety, uh, nineteen eighty five. Um, we also are super excited to again be using your auditorium, which is a state of the art public performance space. And we're just so excited that uh, we're allowed to come in and use it and that the high school is uh, allowing people to do that. Um, I think that communities all across Washington State and groups and communities have a hard time finding performance space, especially um, for shows like the one we're doing, which is really important to the community, to kids, to parents. Um, it's just fantastic to be able to have a space where that can be done. And so to see Quincy um, being a community that is doing that. Again, I think it really helps push community ahead of where a lot of communities are. So it's very awesome for me to be able to come back to Quincy to see that kind of opportunity available, to see that Quincy Valley Allied Arts is still strong and going after twenty years, really. Um, and seeing that talent, musical talent and the arts is still being promoted and supported in Quincy. I think you have wonderful music programs, wonderful students that are performing. And it's just great to see that just continuing to strengthen. So, thank you very much. Please come see our show. It's the next three weekends, Friday and Saturday, uh, seven o'clock, Friday and Saturday, Friday and Saturday, Friday. And then we have a matinee the last Saturday because we know that Quincy likes matinees. And I like to end the show early and go home and still get, you know, there. While at home, I always still want to play. So, thank you very much for your time today.
And thank you.
I'm just gonna go there.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we can send our agenda? I just want to make one small comment. I did notice that the date was wrong on our last meeting of the twentieth. We have downs that January twenty or twenty three. Not a big deal, just. So, do I ask for the motion, right? So I asked for a motion for the consent for the agenda.
You took it.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Is there any discussion that we haven't had that something like that? Okay. Um, the minutes for the meeting?
Uh, that, that approved. That, that motion.
Oh, okay.
Is four through.
They've just gone down.
Yeah.
The reports.
Yep.
Okay, we have a report for the multi-language learner update.
So I would like to welcome Victoria, who is our director of sports support services. So, thank you, Victoria, and you'll use your team. Thank you for being here.
So. Well, um, good evening. I am, I'm Victoria, the Director of Programs and Services. And one of the um, main craft programs and kind of supports that I have the opportunity and privilege to support and lead is our multilingual program. And so this evening, we would like to share with you just an overview of some highlights of how we're working together to support the multilingual learners.
Can you by chance use my?
I can. I can barely hear you.
You can't.
No, I kind of hoarse.
Okay.
I asked. Yeah, I'm gonna do a test.
Are we two way on chat too? Can he?
Yeah.
I see. I definitely hear you. Uh, we're.
Testing.
Audio.
Yeah, I can, I can hear you, sorry.
Brandon.
That there.
Ask. 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 Sting, sting.
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
I will sit in front.
Test one, two, three. There you go. There you go.
That voice, yeah, the big voice. Does that matter?
Yeah. And let me know if, if that. Yours. We talk it. That. So, uh, I am privileged to be here with a team. Um, first I'm Victoria and then I have Mandy Marshall. She's a program coordinator and her role is, is very, very vast. But um, she is a coordinate student identification. You'll learn a little bit more about that this evening. She supports building multilingual specialists or teachers. Um, in addition, she has expertise in our language assessment and our data. And you'll hear more about that this evening. I'm also joined with Danielle Fordner and she's an ELD or English Language Development Specialist for the district. She coordinates student customized language supports at QIA. And in addition, a large part of her role is facilitating and collaborating between our teachers that support language instruction and other instructional staff. Her expertise is deep in language, um, and also co-planning. And she is instrumental as you'll learn more as she shares out in our professional learning for leaders as well as teachers. And at the bottom, we are trying very hard to make sure that we don't speak um, too much in acronyms. But um, multilingual learner, ML, is a student or an individual who is learning multiple languages. And hear that frequently. So this evening, we have uh, some topics and highlights to provide an overview that includes the process of how do we identify our MLs or multilingual learners? Um, and current where we are in our district as far as numbers. We also are going to be describing the stages of language development, which is important because that's how we measure growth and the relationship to our language assessment and even academics. Thirdly, we are going to explain how instruction is provided to give support to language skills for students at any level of, of where they are entering our system in their language development. And then lastly, we're gonna, we have some celebrations that we're very excited to share with you about our new data we have. Um, and actually how it um, aligns with our work. So with that. Next, please. So how does a student become a multilingual learner eligible student? The first step is when a family comes into Quincy, they complete a questionnaire for students as part of the registration process. And when that, that survey indicates that a student has a whole language other than English and they're screened on a language screener or an assessment to determine if they are at a level which English language instruction may be um, needed for their success in school. So again, we have the definition below, but that is the definition and that's how eligible students are, are determined. So this next slide is really in context. Once those students are identified, we have some numbers that are represented in our school district. And those numbers um, that you see there are represented by each school. So there's, they vary um, depending on the numbers of multilingual learners in each building. But also what's important to note that we look at the percentage of the total enrollment. And that is a very helpful factor also. As you'll hear principals um, talk to you about their specific plans and how they support their students in the buildings. And if you look at those numbers as well, um, the five buildings represent, if you look at their averages, it's over fifty percent of their enrollment on average. If we look at our sixth to twelve graders of middle school and our high school, those students represent about thirty-three percent of their enrollment. And actually, just a couple of weeks ago, you heard um, Ms. Franks talk about her enrollment and they represent about thirty-seven percent of their enrollment there at QIA. So grand total for our Quincy School District, we have thirteen hundred and sixty-three as of uh, January eleventh, twenty twenty-four. And this does vary through the month as students come in. It's a continual process to identify, to determine if they need some additional language support. Um, so we are growing and we have been growing. And those numbers really tell us the story of our system work that really promotes that forty-two percent of our students are multilingual learners. How do we support that in our system? How do we collaborate together? Um, and it really tells the story how important that work is as a team and a system to support our students. So next, please. The next session will highlight a little bit about language growth and how important that is for us. So at this point, I'm gonna have Mandy come up and talk to you about some stages. Oops.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, click happy. I'm in the tab for chat.
Oh. Okay. Um, we're gonna talk a little bit about the stages of language development, the importance of that, how we show student growth. And you'll see a very clear connection of why this work is important for us. So with that, Mandy. May or may not.
Oh, give it a try. Yeah, next thing. Okay. Oh, I can hear myself, so it's okay. Uh, so I need to talk with you about stages of language development. Uh, this is the predictable way that uh, students and individuals who are learning an additional language, a second language. Um, this is the way that they grow and learn their language. Um, and when we have pumpkins come in, we have students come in, they come in, most of our KOs come in as a level one students uh, who enter our district. Um, when they come as level one students, they are working heavily on social language. And they need to know how to access the things that are important to them. Um, and as a teacher, I would love my instruction to be the important part, but they really want to know, how do I get to school? How do I get to lunch? How do I get to home? Uh, if you are an elementary student, that recess is pretty important to you. Um, so those were, that's where they start. And as they grow in their proficiency of the levels, uh, when they get to level two, they start to, they start working on what we call general academic language. That's the things like open your book. So things like find page fifty-two. It's um, it's that general academic language that we use in all of our classrooms. And as students grow in their proficiency level, uh, once they hit level three, they're working really heavily on specific academic language. So think your science class, you think chloraville, think the vocabulary that's specific to the things you need to know um, as learners. And as you notice on the stair steps, um, level four expanding in the state of Washington, that's where we are considered proficient. Um, and proficient means I have enough language skills that I can go and be successful in content classes. Um, in the state of Washington, our K ones have a slightly lower proficiency bar than our seconds and twelfth graders. And what we know is that when we look at students who reached level, upper level four, level five, level six, they really do have the language skills they need to be successful in their content area. So you're much more likely to be at state standard if you are upper level four, level five, level six. The thing is though, that takes time, right? Social language is pretty fast, but building that specific academic language just takes time for our students. So we know over many, many, many years that studying it and it takes between five and seven plus years for students to go from that level one up to our proficient. And seven plus is really intended for some of our students come and maybe they've had interrupted education before they came to us. Or maybe they've experienced trauma. There are many reasons why a student might not get out in exactly seven years um, because our kiddos have different stories. So that's how students grow in language development. And if you go to the next slide. We measure that to be measurable, how students grow. And we measure whether they've reached proficiency using uh, the WIDA access annual assessment. I've had many, many, many staff members double check with me, Mandy, do we have to do this? I just state assessment. We're not, we're not doing this, Mandy thinks this is fun. This is our state assessment. And again, we're measuring how the students grow and then how they reach proficiency. And the headsets are on there for my, for my peeps, for kiddos who are in first grade and up. They take their tests on a computer. And even uh, they do even do the speaking portion, so they'll record themselves speaking. Um, and they have headphones that look like that one. Um, and what we want to know is can students use both that social language? And can they apply the academic language in their content here? And so they actually take four tests, listening, speaking, reading and writing. And the window opens every year uh, at the end of January. So it will open on Monday and we will test for about eight weeks um, to measure the language growth of all of our multilingual learners.
Mandy, how, Mandy, how, eight weeks is what you're saying?
Exactly. Yeah. So in order to move students up to this level, in order to develop language, we have instruction called the English Language Development. And for a long time, we didn't have a very clear way in our state to describe that. And we now do, which is makes my life easier. So English Language Development, ELD, it's instruction that integrates content and language for our students. It's based on our ELD standards. So just like other content areas have standards that drive their instruction, uh, we have ELD standards too. Um, and we design that instruction to match where the students were in their language development. So for example, when you saw those level one kiddos and they're working on social language, they're not doing the same thing as the kiddos who are almost level four, because that's what they need. So if you're gonna take that. So examples of language development, language development, um, it's the language you need to be successful in content areas. So for example, if you are working on the language for language arts, um, students might be working on using details when they speak and write. So it's not just Google. It's not just, oh, they had breakfast. But it's what characters specifically were there who had breakfast. Um, when you get to language for math, being able to describe data, you found a solution for something, but also how you solve that problem so that they can communicate what they know. Um, thinking about language for science. Uh, one of the big language skills we need is science, being able to summarize something that you observed. Um, and those are important language skills. Um, and last but not least again, language for social studies. Can you sequence events? Can you tell what happened first and next and last and whatever, you know, you were studying? And so with that, I'm going to turn over to Dana Higgins.
All right, so I'm gonna talk about how we do collaborative planning to support our multilingual learners. So my role as a district K twelve ELD specialist is I'm working with teacher teams to co-plan units where we're focusing on developing language instruction alongside content learning. So when we're doing this collaborative planning, it's bringing together our content teachers and a language specialist such as myself who's bringing the expertise in both of those fields. So I like that little picture diagram there. You can see the art teacher, the social studies teacher, there's an English teacher, a science teacher and a math teacher. And each of those instructors is bringing in a wealth of knowledge on their content standards, their unit of study and learning progression. And they're really that expert in content. That ELD specialist at the bottom, which means the English Language Development teacher, they're bringing in the wealth of knowledge of what language the students need to be able to access the materials and content and social studies or English um, or science. So it's really not expecting all of our content teachers to be an expert in everything. It's them bringing their expertise in with the language teacher who's bringing the expertise of language and we're collaborating together. Kind of lighting that load. So in Quincy, we have integrated this planning process into district lesson planning templates. And so the purpose of that was to make it not feel like something in addition, the teachers were having to experience. It's really integrated into planning tools that they're familiar with um, using and learning how to use as well at the same time. So when teacher teams come and work with me, they're getting professional learning that they can go and take right away to their classrooms and start implementing. I have multiple groups that I'm working with, both in elementary and secondary. And what's been powerful is when principals sit in on this and they're observing this planning, they actually are seeing that evidence happening in the classroom. They're noticing these teachers are using those tools or really focusing on both the language and content learning at the same time. So it's making um, some really positive impacts. Nice. So this planning is to support what we call integrated language development. And that supports all of our multilingual learners. Go to the next slide. Some of our multilingual learners also need something in addition. And when they need something in addition, they get to see our ML teachers out at each of our buildings. And so this is a much smaller group of students. They are selected based on their listening and speaking scores. And you can see that that picture there, that listening and speaking really serves as foundation skills that they would need to be able to interact with more complex tasks like reading and writing in their content areas. So when they come and spend some time with that ML specialist, they're working on social, but language, but also that general academic language that they would need to be able to um, successfully participate in content classes. So that's just a little bit about the language development um, supports that we offer. And I'm gonna hand it back to Victoria, this is another next session.
Can I pause right there? There was more information.
I want a lot of.
If the board has any questions, just hit a pause there.
I did have one. You know, I was surprised that a number of kids in middle school or handle or high school.
Mm-hmm.
Are you judging this on the entrance of these kids, you know, as they're coming in? They haven't been through the system for say, four years, five years. I guess I just figured there'd be less than that.
Fewer?
By high school. It's just because they haven't learned the science vocabulary or the math vocabulary. But they pretty much have the language socially down, correct? I mean.
Like, yeah, there are, there are general things that we, when Mandy showed you the progression.
Correct.
Knowing that it takes five to seven, you're right. Depending on where you enter, we do have some students at the upper grades of the secondary that are more newcomer, therefore I hold on to. But actually, you're absolutely right. The, a large number of our students at the secondary level at six through twelve have been in our system longer. Um, they have unique needs, most are out in um, content with some support, but across the state, we're seeing that there, those transitions are harder as um, we didn't go too much into detail on the assessment and but it, it becomes more rigorous and difficult with language and academics.
Right.
To make those, those, the way to transition from program to student. And so one of the things you might hear our secondary um, uh, principals and teachers talk about is how they are intentionally looking at those students and what are some of those um, opportunities to enhance for them so they can transition out of program and enhance our teaching for their specialized needs? Because they have been in this journey of learning language for a while.
I also noticed when we were visiting class of that mountain view.
Uh-huh.
Uh, the instruction was strictly English.
Yes.
And that surprised me. I guess I thought that they would be trying to use both languages. I don't know why I thought that. Because yes, they need to learn English, but how did they get there?
Complex.
With that?
Yeah. They're multiple models, you're right, and I'm doing that.
I would say actually, the, it was pioneer.
Our pioneers, sorry.
And when we were in the TK room, I didn't notice the teachers just switching between.
Did she?
Yeah, she was switching. And I even used my Spanish to talk to those kiddos because they are a little, they're giant actually.
And I would expect that, but they know best.
Yeah.
Spanish still, where they get that.
One of the biggest transitions in the last three years and one that I'm most excited about. I started out at Quincy School District as a multilingual teacher back then. I think it was an ESL teacher, maybe is what it was called. And I would go collaborate with the special ed department. I wouldn't go collaborate with the English department. I wouldn't go collaborate with the math department, the science department. My students were, you know, a, a second language was seen as a deficit, not as a strength. And we're really kind of honest, there is a, it is a strength. There's so much background knowledge that comes with someone with a second language and learning a second language. I would have to go kind of fork my way into English teachers' classrooms or math to make sure that my, my students' language was supported. And it wasn't always, we're so happy you're here, you know, and even though I'm trying to come in and help them. But one of the biggest shifts that we've made now, and if you go back to um, slide twelve, Sean, I think as a former ESL teacher, is everybody's on the hook for language. Language just doesn't happen in isolation in this ESL teacher's classroom. And that was a lot of pressure because it feel like I was solely responsible for the high school of all, and Matt Williams was my partner uh, for all the EL students, or EL students at the time, ML. Now they're tested in English Language Arts. And that shift happened a little bit longer after I left, that now English teachers are somewhat responsible for teaching language. Now math teachers, there's so much vocabulary in math that they have to be really intentional about that. There's so much vocabulary in science, you have to be intentional with that vocabulary instruction and, and language for social studies too. So it's an integrated test, so everybody has to own our multilingual learners when they're in classrooms, which is really exciting because that's good solid vocabulary instruction. It benefits all students. It doesn't just benefit our whole technical instruction.
And when we talk about specialists that have that deep understanding of what are those strategies?
Right.
If I don't know that language, how do I scaffold what I'm teaching so it's comprehensible and understandable for students? We also are fortunate, we do have um, bilingual staff that do some, supports in primary, um, some scaffolds. But really having the techniques and strategies to scaffold that, so what students are learning all day in all those areas of instruction is a way that they can understand.
Your name, Jeff?
I do have a question. And you reminded me, um, seeing a word like uh, English as a second language, it seems like now there's a shift where multilingual.
I do have a question, Hannah, and you reminded me, um, seeing a word like uh English as a second language, it seems like now there's a shift where multilingual. Now is a larger scope where it's not even about language, like Spanish, English, rather. Has it now moved into content language versus like?
Kind of both. Um, when we talk about the definition, you're right. Um, and you know, as, as time goes, there's different acronyms and different glosses along. It was, like I said, it was ESL, it was English learner. The idea of um the state and nationality is really about their passive based, great ideas that. Students and adults that bring another language are really, is a really strength and a multilingual learner. So in the program, it's, it can be any language other than English. You could be a multilingual learner in more than one or two languages. So it is a broader sense that way, Diana, in the way that we used to think of.
It's been the purpose of the data itself and the, the students that see themselves in this data. It's not necessarily language at all, rather their awareness of the content, right? Because I think that's where even family, because where they're uh designated as um multi-language students. But they've known English all their life, don't even know Spanish for.
Yeah, I kind of refers to what Danielle was speaking to, that there's lots of different types of language that we need to know. Social language first. Um, it's kind of if you thought about yourself going to a foreign language or somewhere you didn't know the language. The first thing you're going to learn is um the very functional social language of how to navigate getting to where you need to go. Or what you need. But we know at school, it's very different, and that academic language is the part where, as Mandy shared, in the, in the. Further language stages, takes longer to learn and is, is, is it gets more rigorous in that you have social language. But you have not yet acquired the, um, the language skills to understand the complexity of academic language. If you went as a um, um, maybe a Spanish speaker that could navigate grocery store. And maybe going places, but then I went into a physics lecture, I'd probably be lost. So I don't have, you know, it's not having that upper level academic language, and so what we're doing is working with academic teachers. To scaffold how we help students grow that curve of language as well as growing their academics. And it's not separating, it's really integrated, as Danielle said, which is the power and, and the real push to be collaborative. So that students have that experience all through their day, not just in the language class. But um using the expertise of those that have that background and the expertise of the academic teacher that has their content background. And together they figure out how to support students to grow in both, because they need both. The WIDA access is, we've only had two years of data, I'm gonna celebrate, you great segue, but we have some celebrations in that. It's rigorous, a very rigorous language assessment. And statewide, um, Washington has, has, has used that now for two consecutive years. Which was different than the language assessment, Hannah, that you and I, I have known it's gone through a couple. But this is the most rigorous, but it really is functional language for academics and social language. Um, and it's powerful and we're excited because it comes with resources and the idea that it is. We, all of our responsibility to support students, including in the language development, so good news. In comparison, Washington State, Quincy, including in Washington State. Has um provided our students that opportunity for two consecutive years, twenty twenty-two in spring. And twenty twenty-three last spring, and we're just gonna get ready for our third round here. But what we noted the first year was significantly less students transitioned out of program. Because the assessment was testing in a different way than we had been accustomed to. And we recognized that we needed to change some ways we provide instruction and integrate that with academics. But we have some good, cool things to share. Um, higher percentage of our total students in Quincy made growth in twenty twenty-three. So the green line is Quincy and the blue line is Washington. So if you look at the top of the green bar. We exceeded Washington State's growth percentage, which was really exciting for us. Not only did we do that, but our, you can see our trajectory was more significant. We, we started a bit lower than the state a year ago or in twenty twenty-two. But we really, um, I commend our district for going in and saying, we have an urgency around changing our practices. And we're gonna focus, because this is what our data is telling us, and we really are seeing some, some great outcomes from our students. Because of that focus. So it had a higher increase of growth over the twenty twenty-two results, and the state does look at growth. So in the, in the state's eyes, as they look at um very much growth. We have met their um projected expectancy of what we would be growing for our students here. But we also know we have to, we are paying attention to proficiency or transitioning out of program. Because that's telling us that those students have a very high likelihood to, to really excel in academics. And, and do really well, actually sometimes outperforming many, many students that are perhaps among our own students. So um QSD started with twenty-five students, meaning um that proficiency in twenty-two. The last spring we had forty-four. So we do really wanna celebrate, um, kind of going to the next slide. Our current work was really focused, how do we change that outcome? We want to grow students, we want to change and make sure that more students are transitioning out of program. Because we know that's a high indicator of, of other um outcomes that we are, are aligned with on our strategic plan for academics and post-secondary. And so um collaboration is key. Um, and programmatically and initiatives, it's not over on the side. I co-plan, co-create with all other directors. We no longer siloed. Um, we work together in instructional planning, in the way we lead and support principals. Um, we make sure that we're sharing the same type of information, and you'll see in the data session later. We talk about all metrics and we talk about how the relationships where we can grow students in everything, which we know is important for them to grow in. And that's that second bullet. We use data very seriously. We really target that. We learn from it, we reflect on it, and then we connect it to what is actually happening in the classroom. Is that's where the difference will happen. And um that helps us to prioritize the focus. So last year, for example, in looking at the data and knowing we had to grow, we really. Um, focused on specific things that we thought would make a difference. Our leaders went through training, our teachers went through training, and we had very, very intentional work. And follow up to see if we could make sure instruction was changing to reflect the data that we saw. And so lastly, you heard um Danielle, we're growing the number of teams and, and professional learning community. And groups of teachers that are working on this planning, is, is planning to be very intentional. To look how it's growing, and we're seeing some really good data, even in between the two annual assessments. That say that this is the right direction for us to go. I'm really proud of our team. Um, Danielle. Um, Andy and I joined, we went to um, um, state conference. And were asked to present about how we're trying to change those, those outcomes for our students through collaborative planning. And just a week ago, we shared regionally to other directors in the area to say. We have some, still, we are, we are not stopping, we are continuing our journey, but. We definitely feel that the collaboration and the work and the focus around our data and working together is, is going to be the outcomes that we're hoping for for students. Do have, thank you so much. Um, do you have other questions, Dan?
Sorry, um, back to the slide six, the forty-two point seven percent of all QSD students are. Multi-language.
Are currently eligible and have not transitioned out of the program. Like Rita said, are they still in program? They are still eligible for language supports.
Right, that's, this is your client.
This is your client. So when you looked at those, there's um, like, I have. So if you kind of counted that the middle school and high school together, there was only five hundred. And then.
Oh, really, is that our elementary?
The bulk is over seven hundred in the elementary.
I think I just wanna say as a former uh ELL student, I'm so impressed with the direction this program is taking. It's a shame when back in the data just throw a binder at us versus actually trying to help us understand. So I do appreciate the idea of collaborating and having accountability for each of the different subject areas. I, I think there's no way to improve our proficiency rates across the board without addressing this, it's almost half of our kids. Don't have the proficiencies in English, so thank you.
Well, no, thank you. And again, it's the collaboration and it's, it takes a village. And our, it's our students and the strategic plan that laid that foundation for us to do the work and the collaboration and now the work that's happening. Um, we are really excited about the direction that's going and some very, very good stuff that are helping to make that happen. Thank you so much.
And I, and I just want to thank Victoria for just her work and her leadership, um, and just the sense of urgency that she's leading her department. Um, I mean, the work that she's doing, it will truly blow all boats. And one thing that is really exciting to me is just the collaboration that she has with Allison at Teacher Learning. In the past, the houses, the MF or the ESL or EL house and Teacher Learning House never crossed paths. And now they are so tightly intertwined, it has to be that way. Uh, so um with that and that urgency, I really believe that, that great things are a source of.
Wouldn't it be cool if it actually started going the other way too, that English speakers.
The honor and, and celebrate.
That's a, that's a future work session.
I know we have some principals in the room. Uh, when I talk regionally to the, my colleagues. Part of what doesn't happen, if you don't have sponsorship at the district level, you don't have um sponsorship. At the building level, and leaders looked at data that was not easy to look at and said, we need to do something. And they sat, they did very specific learning, at least six, seven plus times with Daniel saying, what can we do? What do we need to do? How do we take this out to our sites? And so I just wanna, it is a call across our, our system that our leadership to sponsor new work. And I know that doesn't happen.
You know, our support, that's.
We like the levy, yeah. Yeah. Big move of weather has arrived, um, and I guess left, so since we last met. Um, so we had sub-zero temperatures that had a serious impact uh throughout the district. We had a negative forty-two here in Quincy on one of the coldest days. As a result, we had broken pipes at Monument, UMS and the district office. Um, right in the middle of the WIA, that the alarm went off because our water was pouring out of the ceiling. Uh, I think Tom has finally dried off from a week's worth of water. And I just, and I would just like to thank Tom and Day to Day, they were at Monument at, wanna talk in the morning. Making sure that things were at least stable enough to bring in our, our uh cleanup crew. So school could resume on Monday, uh, without our student Tuesday, it's a three-day weekend luckily. Uh, and I'm just really proud of the facility's team, the work that they've done. We have, we've had to relocate two classrooms. Monument staff has just been absolutely wonderful, um, highly accessible. And uh, it's, we've had very little impact, we haven't had a close schools, uh, just rearranged two classrooms. So just happy to report that, uh, we've had no other broken pipes, just in those three spots. So I was a little worried with the warm weather that it would be an additional buildings, um, and, and it wasn't, so big thank you to them. We've had two snow days, uh, two Fridays in a row, and I promise I'm not trying to give people Friday off. But so those two snow days, we'll use as well, we'll have one snow day on February sixteenth will be made up as a calendar makeup day. And then June fourteenth will now be our new last day of school. So in any subsequent snow days, we saw the seventeen, seventeenth and eighteenth, a little bit of wiggle room. And it just depends if, if we have a, if the, if the governor declares a national emergency. Um, you know, we can apply for a waiver, but they definitely tied about waivers, so we still have two more days on our calendar that we'd use, uh, if we have to. Um, just wanted to let the board know, when you saw my update that we were denied our first repeat appeal by the WIA to remain a one A. Um, I went to Ritten with uh Brett, we, they told us at three o'clock Friday afternoon of our appeal in person time. Uh, which had me in person in Ritten, so uh Brett, Senior Scott Fairlink and I uh. Uh, jumped in suburban and ran over for an in-person appeal, which was also denied. And so we are now into the C-WAC, which I think is gonna be, it will be fine, it will be a good fit for the Quincy School District. We've been in and out of the C-WAC several times and um, we're gonna make sure that we have, our, our kids have everything they need to be as competitive as possible. And, and have a good athletic experience, and that really is why our fault, we're not, championships are great, but what's more important to us in Quincy is that they have a positive experience. Um, in athletics, that's what really matters to us. Um, legislation update, we are Shannon, DJ, Aliel and Yolali. Uh, Yolali is out today with an air infection, hopefully she's feeling better. We are leaving on transportation at nine, okay, eight thirty. Thank you, Shannon, we talked about that, eight thirty in the morning, just so we have plenty of time to stop for lunch. It starts at one, correct? So it's a great time, uh, um, seven, uh, seven thirty, we'll have uh QSD uh dinner with Representative Yamara. So we're excited to connect with him and talk about some of the pressing issues that are important to us here in Quincy. Um, new board member orientation, Velma is scheduling orientation sessions with the three board members. So she'll be reaching out and trying to get the various uh schedules, um, coordinated with your very busy schedules. So, um, if she hasn't already contacted you, it should happen within the next couple of days. And then just again, Happy Board Appreciation Month. I mean, I, I say this with all sincerity, that I feel that. Our school board has the toughest volunteer job in the entire district, and I would put it up against any other group job. It's very challenging. So thank you for jumping in, thank you for your service and Happy Board Appreciation Month.
I didn't want to interrupt, but do you wanna let elaborate a little bit about your school closure decision since the question came out?
Yeah, happy to elaborate, so and how we make those, it's, it's. Um, yeah, so Rob, he gets the road about three o'clock in the morning. He takes a, a pretty wide distance to drive that goes all the way down to the impressive bar. He goes through um the Gorgon Beverlyburg, which uh, uh, S- Suncaya, not Suncaya. Thank you, check someone, goes up the Frenchman Road, you know, Beverlyburg and Adam Beverly too, and White Trail are kind of the, they're main thoroughbears for our buses. Um, he gives me a call four thirty in the morning and him and I uh argue back and forth for a good ten minutes. About whether or not we're gonna close school or two hour late start. Uh, not ten minutes, but we have a good discussion just exactly what the temperatures are, uh, conditions are. And then really, it's, if it's four inches and no snow or no rain, um, four inches of snow, we can, our buses can handle that. But if we have a wave even up to eight miles an hour, that can drift things shut really close, so really quickly. So we'll close if we have snow drifts. And then any kind of ice, and icy, ice is obviously the most, is the most terrifying thing for me. Um, so on Friday, you know, people in town didn't get the freezing rain, but from, you know, road by south. Um, all the way from Hill Royal City, uh, got freezing rain. So we get it, you know, Rob can't keep his wipers functional, or you know, he checks the road and it's ice on the road. Um, and he does break tests and he has a forty-foot gap that he tests. Um, if that fails, we'll call it two hours. Sometimes two hours might be enough, but the thing that's really hard with ice. Uh, if the temperature doesn't come up enough and the roads aren't treated, uh, a two hours doesn't really get us, so that's why we'll go to a closure. So that's a great question.
Thanks.
Any other questions about my report?
But thank you for clarifying that, because I always wondered too, like as a student, like how do they decide whether or not they're school? And like, a lot of people ask me and I, I didn't know, so I'm glad that's the way I responded. They just caught my dad.
For example, on Friday, Rob called and said, uh, we can do a two hour, because we had some snow. Out at Shored, and we thought, well, the buses, they were drifting, but we'll call it, be fine. And then we thought we were gonna get away with it, but the freezing rain came up from the south and just impacted more than half our district. Then he called me back at five thirty, so that two hours gives us a little bit of time to make a closure decision, which is helpful.
And then it doesn't, it's the air temperature makes difference too. When we were down at two or three degrees, we can't have kids standing out there.
Right, so what we, you know, our, our, kind of look for, if it's, you know, negative ten degrees. We'll, we'll call it two hour late start and hopefully it'll get warm, and even some of the negative temperatures, negative one or two degrees, we can still go with it. You know, we'll call it two-hour late start and hopefully it'll get more, and even some of the negative temperatures, negative one or two degrees, we can still go with a two-hour late start. Um, but when it's negative twenty-two, um, you just, it wasn't safe. So that was, that was an easy closure, cause we had probably the easiest closure I'll ever make, we had dripping snow and just, just frigid temperatures. So that was one of the easier ones, Fridays was tougher.
Thank you. Student boards.
Uh, on Wednesday, there will be a movie night on the twenty-fourth, uh, the movie will be Barbie and it'll be at seven P M, I believe it was five dollars, just looks good. There will also for seniors, the cap and gowns, uh, will be, will stop being for sale on the thirtieth. For all the seniors, uh, diploma updates will be on thirty-first, and there will also be a senior shirt selection. Connected dogs for juniors and seniors will be, will be, uh, on the twenty-seventh. At eight thirty, and it will only be for juniors and seniors, uh, signups for this will be on February ninth. Uh, on the ninth, on the ninth, we're gonna have a track to grad, uh, on. The freshmen that are on track to graduate will have a celebration on the February twelfth. Um, the Weeda test is coming up and it will be for ju- for juniors and seniors, they will have it on February sixth. And freshmen and sophomores will have it on March first.
Then this week is like the last week of semester one, so a lot of students are stressing over finals and getting their work done. And, um, F C C L A is holding a fundraiser for state, um, for their state competition in March. So if you guys are looking to buy some Krispy Kreme donuts, um, so for some F C C L A officers. They're, they'll have like these orange jellies, they're easy to find. And then, uh, F C C L A is also doing events of Valentine's Day, so they're selling brownies and, um. Students will be able to pick them up after. And I feel it's fun, you know.
Thank you, great. Okay, we're leadership and development. I did ask if I could bring up back that I'd like to see curriculum, uh, libraries set up in each of the schools. Nick would like to see it in the, perhaps the transportation building and the, uh, district office. And I just think that it would be easier for parents if they could go to the school where their child was at. And there's only going to be X number of grades rather than K through twelve in one library. If, uh, I just feel it'd be easier experience for them and then. They can go to the teachers afterwards if need be, and if they don't have time during the normal business hours, I thought they could perhaps check them out.
Can you explain what you mean by sort of human awareness?
I'm talking about sex ed in particular, but any curriculum, it doesn't have to be that, um.
Yeah, so for the board to serve as a background information, and I do wanna apologize, we we normally have future topics or information or or additional. Information requests, that's not on the board, and Shannon may even talk about one possibly, so Shannon, you, we could talk about that here too. Uh, as student board rep. You know, with you, Alison and I have been talking about curriculum library for a long time, um, and I think Alison, we could give your, your thoughts on that.
Yeah, um, I did speak with Tom and we could have set that up in the, um, transportation if we wanna do that. The benefit of putting it in transportation is that we can have all of our K twelve curriculum in one location. And so if you're a parent who has multiple students, we could have everything and we could really do every content area, um. If we wanted to do it in each building, we would then have to multiply the number of copies available of each. And it is expensive, curriculum is, um, especially if you wanted the help teachers editions and the student editions. Just multiplying that out is, it it's a cost, um, I just love.
And space is an issue too.
Yes, but I felt like most of the buildings, uh, then the all, uh, you know, right there in front where it's close to the office. Like secretaries can keep an eye on what's going on too. There's always gonna be books that are just taking out, but, um. If they're going to be checked out, then you've got somebody there that can do it.
I think this is something that Alison and I can continue to talk about and explore. You know, I I think there's, there's some absolute need to have a curriculum library in in the district office. And I think once we have a firm plan, I can write that up and set that up for the board, what that would look like. For the board to provide some additional input on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it is, it is exploring that space, even in, you know, what I think of even now, you, uh, fire code, we can't have anything in the hallway.
No.
Um, we can't, uh, and then every hobby is is used, um, I mean, you're getting all, um, A L E, we're using. I shouldn't say this cause I recorded, but we're using every single available space, whether it's, uh, on the map or not. I mean, cause our speech therapist, they have to still provide services, every closet we're being, we're using at A L A. So I think what we, you know, just in thinking transportation, um, and we don't, we don't get a lot of requests, but we can all, you know. Parents can always ask and come in and see their child's grade, so, and we're 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 happy to accommodate that too. And we can, we can gather things and have it available too.
But many of them aren't available during the day, is my concern, um.
Yeah, our buildings are open till about four thirty, and then, uh, transportation's open till about five, so, transportation even. Uh, we have, uh, Roxanna is there to Valencia till, um, bye. And Shannon, you wanna bring your?
Uh, just about the the student reps and just getting an update from them as far as how they're doing with the board and how integrated you are. And whether or not we could just see how you're doing as far as being student reps on the, with us on the school board. And what we could do better to help involve you or, um, you know, just have a dialogue about that. And get to know you a little more and what your roles are, and we would love to get to know you more in general. But also what your roles are on the board and whether or not it's being fulfilled and and two-way street though, same time.
Yeah, thank you for, like, taking that as considered, and like, we appreciate it, so, yeah.
So both those topics, we'll make sure that there are board leadership agenda too, so we can speak about that in in more depth and report back to board on both those topics. So, anything else with board leadership, Tricia?
Well, just, I've heard it, just to follow up with what Shannon asked, um, I think maybe having the board reps also talk a little bit about some work sessions that we had with them. Uh, this year, um, they actually had a lot of input into some of the policies around. Uh, we still need to make a couple of those updates to those student board rep policies, I think, or maybe.
No, we did.
Did we do it? Okay, so in the early, we should bring them back and let the current board take a look about the policies are, and then just. You know, you updating them on some of our conversations, I think, would be helpful and also us making sure that we're still following through on some of those commitments too.
How was your review and adaption? Did you get this study coming in?
I don't mind, but we have the first reading, no doctrine, um, any questions, and this just came out, um, but of course, when this came out, uh. Our agenda came out on Thursday, so we still have some time, um, to ask some questions. Uh, and then the second reading is up for adoption today, and one thing of note toward the the second adoption, second reading. Sean, if you could pull up, and Diana asked, she has some questions, and I really appreciate, you know, uh, Diana wrote. Some comments in the margins and and about those two, and show us the full board here a little bit. One of her questions, that was a great question, she asked. Sorry, uh, word inside her reading, um, so, she asked, what's the difference between policy? Twenty-one ninety and procedure twenty-one ninety P? So, great question, so, policy is the what, that's the board level. The twenty-nine P is the how, that's how the superintendent is going to, um, implement, yeah, the the policy. So in a lot of cases, the board approves policy, procedure is is district-directed, that's how we do it. So, we, you know, we'll, but I'm, I'm, we're, we'll talk about this a little bit more about board leadership. Is really having those policies as those are your action items, those are what you're approving. The procedures really don't require board approval, but I still think it's really important that they are on the board agenda. I think it's important that the board has a whole discussion around procedures to really understand how they're implemented and what that might look like. So we'll talk about board leadership about how that might look a little bit differently in this table. So that's the, that's the difference, Diana, um, and. If I go into procedure thirty-two oh-five, and the board's comfortable, we can still approve it because it is a procedure. Um, and if you go all the way down to page.
I think it was eleven.
The eleven, Tricia brought this to my attention, she had a question about this. It it originally said. Board would approve the, or board would hear the appeal, and.
Sean, can you go down to the bottom of that page?
Okay, perfect, thank you. Save me a search.
Very bottom.
Right, yeah, so, they, uh, so what, what we, what was deleted is. The state can play procedures with additional Title IX requirements at the level to appeal to the board directors. The intent of the change and what the federal government tries to, what they're doing with this procedure. Is to give more flexibility, so it doesn't go right to the school board, cause there might be some cases where it's maybe not appropriate to go to the school board. Might not be right to go to the school board, you might have an independent attorney come in and and hear the appeal. You might have a representative from Clear Risk Insurance come in here, the appeal, or there might be an outside contractor. We do that with student discipline hearings, we'll bring an impartial person in to come in and hear the appeal before it goes to the school board. So, that, we we struck, continue that, and then we added, um, appeal to the designated appropriate decision maker. And that just goes, and it might be the board, depending on oftentimes legal counsel. So that just gives us a little bit more flexibility. So I don't like to do these pivot changes, especially of the board meeting, that's not typical practice. But since it was a procedure, not a policy, I felt comfortable doing that, as long as you were fully aware of that. And Diana, do you wanna ask some of your questions?
So we're on thirty-two oh-five P, right?
Correct.
So with what you just mentioned right now, uh, where it removes the school board, on that whole section, um. It doesn't ever clearly state the school board would be involved.
But it, the 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 guidance from the federal government, it doesn't mean that they wouldn't. It just gives us flexibility, you know, especially own council, to decide who would be, who would be involved in that appeal process. So that was the change and the 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 guidance was, I don't know. So they may, the board might be involved in the situation, but it also might not be.
At your discretion, right?
It would mine or 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 our journey is legal. Yeah.
It it also, uh, the note here was that it it did reflect, the flexibility reflected the law. So the law doesn't say it has to go to the school board, um, but it can't go to the school board, so I think that was the, that was the flexibility that was.
And each one of these cases, cases are so individualized and specific, it gives us, and I think that's why. It gives us some room to make some, the best decision depending on the situation. In alignment with legal counsel too.
So I have a question though.
Okay, yeah, any other questions?
Uh, for twenty-one ninety P. On page two. Um, where it talks about additional assessments where the district will have same written for electronic parental permission prior to conducting additional. Assessment, I guess my question is why add the word additional, it, just for clarification. Does that mean the first time the youth are tested or highly capable, no matter what their parents are notified?
I don't know, Alison, Alison coordinates our uncapable program.
Yeah, so, um, at K five, we actually, um, screen students through a screening process every year. At second grade, we give a universal screener that's really specific, um, it's called the COGAT cognitive aptitude test. Um, and it really helps us identify some other skills that aren't academic, it's not verbal, non-verbal and phonetic reasoning, um. All of the assessments that we use are what we call universal, so we give them to every student. In the grade level that we say they will give it to, no matter what, so it doesn't require any preapproval. If a student is referred for the highly capable program. Or, um, they have a score, um, on the COGAT that's at a certain threshold. They will be referred for it, capable, and anyone can be referred, anyone can refer a student, head, people, parents, community, staff members. Fellow students in fact, um, and if they're referred, then they give an additional assessment. The the COGAT screener, for example, is only thirty minutes. Um, but the additional, um, full assessment for COGAT, um, is ninety minutes. So it's quite a bit longer and more in-depth, so if we give the additional assessment, then we do get parent permission first.
The universal one though, everyone gives it.
And that is the difficulty, it used to be, um, you had to score the ninetieth percentile on. No, we are some task two to get looked at, or the, you know, and we know that's not the case. Especially if you're a student that's learning a second language too.
Yes.
Um, or a third language, so the COGAT is it is non-verbal, it's much more accessible, and it's amazing the kids that, that it will identify. Um, that would not have been identified without that screener and then just getting it to a deeper level. And there's some districts, you know, a lot where this is coming from, there were some districts that would, you would do your uncapable testing. Or your screener on a Saturday, and you had to be invited. And that, that's never been our practice, um, so that's for a lot of these languages, is making sure that that the access to highly capable is, the field's getting this leveled.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you for that. Um, my next question was on page three, under the category selection. Where it talks about a special feature, and I was just wondering if it would make more sense if it was specialized feature. Um, yeah.
The language is a little funny there, um, it's referring to actually one of our teachers who is specialized, um, in our highly capable program. Um, our K five steam teachers are also our highly capable teachers, um, and, um, so they are always there. There, so that's a special teacher.
That's an easy fix.
We don't want the procedure.
And then on, um, a little further down, number three, since you took off district's program. The in the, to me, doesn't stop making sense, so just removing the in the. You have a good person in Congress with, um. Look it over my notes. Yeah, that's it for that policy, um, can I go to the next one? So, I don't know which reading, if it's one or two, uh, but twenty-ninety. The first reading.
Twenty-ninety or twenty-ninety P?
Just twenty.
I think that's the first reading, who does? Oh, twenty, twenty-nine, sorry, yeah, we're six point one.
And it was just a small question, but it was just right there in the first sentence. Where the district goals and objectives related to an instructional program have been accomplished, um, I think for me. Like, part of the reason I'm here on the school board is just to ensure accountability and the word accomplished to me. Um, only guarantees we're gonna get one-sided information and that's just our success. I won't all kind of targeted impact data. And what I mean by that is if that grant specifically was funded to specialize in language development. I wanna see all the data, not just accomplished, so I don't know if that makes sense, it's just the word accomplished to me, I'm uncomfortable, but.
The little narrow sense is down.
Yeah.
And I.
Maybe reading into it, but.
I was, well, I don't think so, uh, when I read it, you know, I interpreted accomplished as as soon as like a checkbox. Right, and that's kind of what I'm hearing, where impacted it has, you know, what is the impact that is made, what it, what is it actually, you know? So I think that's great, the one thing that I, I will check, cause this is a policy, I'll check the R C W. Just to make sure, cause what, sometimes they take, they pull straight R C W language out, so I'll check that and get back to you.
I think it is straight R C W language, and the other thing that is really not even current, which R C Ws often don't feel very current. Cause often they're, they're, right, if you long time ago, is an annual report. And our board does not get annual reports, we get reports at every single board meeting about how we are making progress or not making progress. So, it it differs a little from our actual practice, but I think it probably does draw directly from the person W.
Yeah.
So checking that.
Yeah, I'll have to check that.
So, thank you.
Good questions.
So you can take a motion.
Okay.
It shouldn't be an action there, but that.
There should be.
There should not be.
Oh, okay.
The per second, that is actually, yep.
Is there a motion for the second reading to be adopted? And move to adopt the policies and procedures under six point two? Then made motion and approved, or is do we have any in um in discussion? All in favor, but oh yeah, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Now, is there any discussion?
You didn't hurt the record, Chad, Chad's here, he he's uh I.
Chad?
Yeah, I don't know why you said.
Are we still, are you still on?
Yeah, I wanted to try to work on it during the the work session.
Okay. Right.
Hey, we don't have any English business stuff, now I said, and or new business. So the work session is not open?
Yep. So we will transition to a work session, thank you everyone for attending. And they can stay for this or they can go, it's fully up to them. Generally, public can participate by the way to uh pretty quick. Not that their Allison's good, Allison's report is very, very hard, um no, that's awesome. Um and then we have a dinner for the board in the break room that we can grab dinner and then come back. Oh, sorry, especially.
It's like one way, one way out apparently.
And also, where you want to sit up, what was it, a little up and around?
Are you thirsty? Out of here.
Friends while you can.
Yeah, forget your little gift over there. And I think we probably should think about um what's our timing on.
And I think it's pretty good, I think Duncan, right, it's quite. Um you heard, you just want to sit down, I, I hope it's through the table in front. Or actually, I think it's his table, yeah, I think the other one.
About like start planning in March, and then maybe have the other. Okay, all right.
You don't, you don't even, you don't even.
Hey, Sha or Sha.
Yeah, it's really weird, I'm not really quite sure what's causing it, because. I don't think so, honestly, I think it's, I I don't know what it is, we're gonna have to probably play with it tonight. Because you can hear these speakers. See, it can hear you, but doesn't come over the speaker, I'm not even quite sure why, because like we can test. And it seems to work fine, it's just really weird, try. But I have you, here, I just got your phone for one second, I just want to try one other thing just to see. Other otherwise, I could gotta have somebody smarter than me at this, probably hand you that, figure out what the, I'm not even joking. Between him and Justin, they've kind of set this all up, but I just can't figure out why it's not. I just want to see. Okay, that's on the board, you wanna, can you, can you try speaking one more time? Okay.
Yeah.
See, I can hear you there, something Justin had, okay, I I think I might know what the problem is, well, but I. Oh, because. At least I can hear. Or I think that was through the, can you speak one more time, I can't even tell where where the audio is coming from, ceiling or what's the the top. Uh sure, that, it's definitely not my fault.
Testing.
Okay, so.
Testing.
Okay, I may have to have Justin figure this out, because he's he's kind of our, I just want to try one other thing, because I can see audio coming through. Okay, by the way, thank you for helping me. We're gonna put you on the the payroll here. Okay, could you, could you try speaking real?
Testing.
Yeah.
Do you want to try one more time?
Oh, sure.
Hi, Sean.
Okay, that's really weird, I I guess I'm gonna have Justin look at it, I know I know what the fix is now. I'll just put Chad worker on the audio on as a TV and it will just work for now and then I'll. I'll find people rest, thank, thank you, actually, wait, let me. Okay, let's let me do this one more time, because. Because I'm gonna have to have Justin figure out what the heck's going on or why it's not coming. Oh, but that's okay, I have a solution, okay, you want to un- unmute one more time? Okay, you unmute.
Hi, Sean.
Okay, cool, okay, hey, um okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, bye. Hey, Chad, hey, Chad, I think I think I had a temporary solution in place. Uh I'm gonna have to figure, I'm gonna have to have Justin, who's kind of our audio visual guru, figure out why it's not coming through the over overhead speakers, but we've got you coming through the TV. So I think now you can interact with us. Okay. Sorry about that.
Uh no worries.
I'm gonna chalk it up to the whatever can go wrong, it will. Okay, cool, well, I'll leave it on like this and then uh then you can interrupt us uh whenever necessary.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, buddy. Okay, I've got a temporary fix in place for Chad, so he's gonna come in here here, and I'm gonna have Justin figure out why the audio thing. Oh, okay. Tomorrow, but but he can. Oh, you can see, if he doesn't, when he um if he um uh if he has that. Oh yeah, I mean, here, I'm gonna do this. I heard Waha and I was like, oh, I was like, okay, I'm sorry. Uh what am I doing here, okay, so you're gonna do witness K.
Okay.
And. Oh, wait, that's where you want to be, because guess what, there you are.
Oh, well, you just gotta change, change your um.
A long time ago, maybe uh in the last year, when you are a little table. Yes, when we, then we can.
Yeah, you want to do it. And you just gotta figure out which, which one's gonna be screen.
Three board members for the first time yet. Thank you, thank you. Oh, no, you got to. When they turn them, right.
What screamer?
It's Thursday. Today is Wednesday, was Tuesday.
I think you're gonna have to.
Yes, I.
Where are we at?
Me and my wife and my gender, we are in the George.
You're gonna be living up here?
And tomorrow.
There you go, there you go, I think there were.
You have three.
Oh, personally. This is not because I look at watching you, you have your power fights and all that. That's true, yeah, you guys are maybe like, I swear, but I've never even thought about creating power. Oh, my gosh, everything insane, like on the fly or they're like rolling, it's just like. Yeah, I'm enjoying.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's uh.
Were there some there?
Live soon, but I don't know. Well, I think, I know live for sure.
It's like soon.
Yeah, I don't know about the recording, but I'll figure it out, that's okay, we can um, maybe we can. Okay, it's gonna be a way, hopefully. Where we could upload it, where it could translate it.
Yeah, there there should be adults.
Yeah, which is, yes, I'm. I know, I know, I'm not really my internet, actually, I believe you have one. I haven't really got any other bulletins that I've put up, it's kind of funny when. I'm like, I'm just playing, playing, playing over here. We're gonna be able to.
I I I wrote my blog, I wrote my blog, it's too voluntary, and I don't think they pay.
See now, now, oh, that's.
But yeah, I was thinking of, if you guys on my drive back, I'm like, oh, we're hurt, I'm like. Let's scoop on the day.
Oh, well, what's what's terrifying is I. We all were in the beginning, we have a group chat together. And two hour late, I don't know, two hour late, I don't know, they're talking. But probably right in the middle. And then uh.
It's like gambling.
Superintendent, and then literally one minute later, Royals lose, as you know, Moses like they went first.
They went first.
Moses like, well, so that makes it go better, everybody else goes. Yes. Yeah. For his sake, I hope they do.
I would.
Doing good, yeah. Thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Appreciate the time with you all and I um just want to first acknowledge that. There is a lot of information here, so um I wanted to provide. Resources for you to be able to understand really the context of data here. Um and and hopefully leave with some resources that maybe you can use at future board meetings. You know, Victoria's look tonight, she said, I'm going to try to use one of that for now, we have so many. In our field, I know Chad and I have some of that. Um but assessment have a ton of acronyms, in fact, today was just talking with some.
So just a little bit of background about this work session, so we call it data desk, that core work session, so what we're trying to work towards. Is a way that, you know, the state has their dashboard. But oftentimes the data that's on the state is either lagging, it's old, it's outdated. Or it's not accurate, because they pull from our student information systems, sometimes our student information system, they don't, and. And their, what is not our student information system and what they're pulling, it might not jive. So we have, we see there is one comes out, we'll go in and get adjustments on that, or even the whole state has that to do adjustment on their side.
Yes.
So we're looking for more predictable, more reliable, and and I think more accessible for real time data. For the school board, and we've been working on this for a year, really trying to make sure, because it's hard, you know, everybody says, well, just let's pull the data and put it out there. To make sure that it's accurate and that it's it's easy to pull on a regular basis, it's really challenging. So but we are getting closer and closer, I'm really excited, I think by the end of this year. I think we'll have some really good things filled out, and then it'll be available for the school board. And then ultimately, what we'd like to do is put on our website, so it's available for the public as well.
So you have several different, this um is just all replies, um and then these are. Included in the slides, but a little bit bigger, because I thought you might swap them as reasons as these pop um at future board meetings as well. Um so the main idea is, we'll just give an overview of um what we call an strategic plan, the growth in history on data. And then really dig into what does all of it mean, it's pretty, it can be complex. And then we'll actually look at the dashboard, um that work on the key performance indicator dashboard or BBI. Dashboard, um and we'll actually look at um just mockups that we have right now, to get your feedback, if it's data that you. That is um permissible and, you know, data that. Yeah, exactly, and really using you as a filter as well, not being the data that's useful for you, but data that would be um to split public. Actually, in.
Uh this one is not public?
So there's a lot of data on um from OSPI that's quite public, that and we we have that data that anybody can look up. Um but the data that we're talking about is much more real time data, so. Um instead of waiting till all of our final assessment data comes through, OSPI has lots of different. Windows of dates that they use, and so they just posted maybe what, two months ago or a month ago? The spring data from last year. The spring data from last year. So it's pretty late. But this is public, cause it's linked to our.
Okay.
To our. Oh, we're sorry.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
But the, but the dashboard that we're building out that people can go in and review our data. Where's that? That's not live yet.
Oh. And, and the data, this is like Quincy exclusive, right? Like.
Yeah.
Like, no one other districts.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
It's.
Yes, it's Quincy exclusive, yes.
It's sorry, I was. Other clerk. Are we still public?
Yes.
Okay. That's fine.
Yes.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
No, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And we're still recording.
So then I'm here. Right.
It's okay. Um. But just know, there's too much information that I was going to present today for you. You know, that you haven't memorized or even mastered. So um, just know that, you know, we can, we will be continuing on the conversation and just especially then, you know, we really do update our data whenever we do presentations. For you, so um.
And you'll see this data cycle through and you know, some reports from house and reports from our building. Um, so you'll see, and that's one thing we're trying to do too with the school board and the public and our buildings is that we're consistent with the data. We're consistent with the way the data looks and is visualized. Um, because you know, you'll see that it can be presented in a lot of different ways. And then that in itself is really confusing. So we're trying to make sure that it's comprehensible and consistent.
Yeah. Alright, so the first, we're gonna talk about an overview and there's quite a bit in here that I wanted to break down for you. Um, so we'll just go through one. Um. You know, in our strategic plan, we have five goal areas and one of our goal areas, and they're all student centered, based on student data. But the um, the goal area that I really wanted to date into today is um, growth and mastery of priority standards. So it's standards based, and when we say growth. We mean growth. But when we say mastery, um, sometimes it's called proficiency. Um, so we're talking about proficiency or mastery of a certain standard or certain group of standards. Uh, I put together a glossary of very confused acronyms that it's almost hard to talk about in this sense, so not using it. Because they're a lot, they're mouthful. Um, for example, the law kids, you're not gonna hear Washington kindergarten inventory developmental skills in a sentence. Very. Um, so. These are some very common um, acronyms. Some of them are actually just terms that look like acronyms, but don't stand for anything. Some of them used to stand for things. Um, STAR is a great example. Uh, WIDA used to stand for something, but um, because of the. How the, how the texts have changed over the years, um, they're now just called STAR. Yeah. So they don't see everything.
Chad, sorry, this uh, is two years too late. Chad. Chad always asks about the acronyms and then.
Oh.
Then he threatened us with.
Still appreciate it.
We're quiet, we're excited, we don't like uh, the. We need international excellence. Yeah.
So instead of all of these, when we encounter an acronym through the presentation, I will just explain what it means. And then you'll have this for your reference. And do let me know if I'm using an acronym and you don't know what it means. Very. Um, one of the ways that we look at data in a district is, in our district, is to think about who's our audience. Um, and we use a little bit differently, we call grain size when we're talking to different um, groups. So. Um, if you think about like a Google map and you think about that satellite where you can see the globe. Um, that's the largest grain size that you can get. And um. That kind of data would be the type of data that you as a school board would be looking at. Um, and we look at that data as a cabinet, um, or admin leadership, our district leadership team. We look at this really high level um. Satellite data that really shows big patterns. Um, and then we can dig in further, ask more questions. The map level data is um, like if you, you know. Uh, are looking kind of zoomed in, you can actually kind of see the streets and the roads, right? Um, that for us in education is thinking about the standards, the actual content standards. When we're getting information on how students are doing for a particular standard, um, make a unit assessment. And our, our teams look at that. So our professional learning community teams, our teachers. Um, our school improvement teams, instructional coaches. Um, and they're trying to identify um, the reading, math and other skill gaps. Or um, to make exceptional teachers. Then at the level where you're actually putting a little man on the Google. Street and you can really see it. That's the street level data. And um, that's really the most important data for our teachers. That's those really close interactions with, you know, students every day. And we call those our daily formative assessments that students can get feedback from the teacher or from other students. Um, and we would do this through direct observation or an exit slip where they fill something out and the teacher would get it right there. Um. We also have some face to face contact with um. Community and other stakeholders, um, when we're doing our curriculum adoptions. For example, I'll reach out to community members and do an interview. Where is given a perspective on what's important to them? Or we'll do um, empathy interviews around when we went to remote learning, we were learning a lot about. How to access um, our curriculum digitally and that, that sort of thing. So all of that is considered street level data, face to face data. You'll rarely at the school board level see that type of data. Um, it's mostly gonna be that large grain size, what we call satellite data. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um, for our. Teachers. Um. We will hear principals and leaders and teachers talk about Quincy Day Five. And I just wanted to point this out, this is classroom based. Um, super high leverage instructional strategies or practices that get a lot of effect. Um, when we're done properly in the classroom. So we've identified these five things that every classroom really should have. Um, and it's really just a goal, so students know where they're going long term with the learning that they're doing over the course of the unit or year. That every day, they know exactly what they're supposed to be learning and it's really clear to them what that looks like. And then that there's really rigorous opportunities to make meaning of what they're supposed to be learning that day. And then the teachers are giving feedback based on what they're learning from student, you know, interactions in the classroom. And that student can really self assess, hey, I'm making progress, I'm about to also learn today and I'm making progress on my long term goal. So I just wanted you to know that this is really the true driver and most important type of data, again, that we have in classroom mode. Cause this really changes practice every day with our kids. Um, but that being said, um, at the. School board level, um, we look at really three types of satellite data in our growth and mastery of priority standards. We have this smarter balanced assessment. Which um, is a state assessment that's given annually for ELA and MAP. Um, ELA is English language arts, which is um, reading, writing, and in this case, listening. It also should refer to speaking, but we don't have that in the SBA, our smarter balance assessment. Um, it does meet our state federal um, requirements. Um, and. We have uh, there's different parts to this smarter balance assessment. There's ELA and MAP, which most people know about grades three through eight in the 10th grade. And then there's also something called the WCASS that's um, for science that's the Washington. Science. That's given on the certain grade levels. Uh, but for all of those, the mastery level or where proficiency is, um, there are four levels. So there's a one, two, three, four, and the proficiency is at level three, four, four. So three and above means mastery or proficiency. And that means that you've met the grade level standard according to the state. They also have growth data that we'll talk in a lot more detail here at what that looks like. The STAR assessment is um, and not a state required assessment, but it's a district required screener. Which means we give it to all of our students. The intention is that we would know um, K ten, three times a year, students' progress to meeting proficiency. On what will eventually be saved assessment. And what we found over time is we've given the STAR since the 2019 school year. The, every time we've given the smarter balance assessment, which hasn't been every year because of COVID. But every time we have, we've seen a really close correlation between our STAR score, proficiency score and our smarter balance proficiency score. So that tells us a really good predictive indicator. That students who are proficient at STAR will likely be proficient at state tests that relate um, that we report on. Allison, when do you give that? Do you start that early in the fall? Yes, so um. For every grid level except for kindergarten, cause they do walk in. Um. We start it in September. Yeah. So the month of September is our fall window. And then um, typically the month of January is our winter window. And then um, May usually is our spring. And I will show you exactly, I've got a calendar on the next page too, so you can have that for your reference. And I mean, if I may, they've, do, do they take the STAR um, assessment in May before or after the smarter? It's a really great question. And sometimes it depends on the school.
Yeah.
Usually our K five won't to wait until the very last minute to give this smarter balance, so the STAR will happen before that. It is a bit up to teens, the window for um, both are close to the same timeframe, so they could. Decide to get that speed first. You just get the STAR data back immediately. Right, as soon as they test the eye. So they would have a better prediction than having to SBA that.
And there's a lot more tools. In the ESTAR for teachers to make instructional decisions around, you know, SBA you get it, it's all. They're not in your class anymore by the time they get their STAR. That offers teachers a real time opportunity to make their management students based on their need.
Hmm, yeah. Really, I'm gonna show you a couple of different ways that we do that, but. Yeah, you know, we, we like to see, it's important that we give spring because we can see when they left. Um, you know, us them for summer, if they still have the skills and. All. Some of them are many ones. Yes, exactly. They have a slide that typically, and then we can make really clear instructional decisions, not follow information. But and then since we have all the spring, we can see, you know, year to year, like over the course of the year, how much growth that they make. Teaching and then we do look at spring to spring data and see how much growth they're making from year to year, teacher to teacher. It's really important to us too. So we use the STAR data in a lot of ways, and it's really nice because we can start um this in winter, from winter from kindergarten, and then we have the same measure all the way through to high school. To see it out pretty good there. Whereas the SBA, it's our own assessment annual, and only starts in third grade. And that's way too late to know if our kids are on track. And we don't have a ninth grade assessment either for SBA, so you know, it's something that's really supposed to. High school assessment, right? It used to be eleven grade, but it's not very long, but it's still weird that we haven't gotten. Um, and then the WE-Access, you heard Victoria speak about, um, that is our English Language Development Assessment. And of course, it's um for students who not yet, you know, exited um program as a multiple learner. Um, and they have progress as well, that's reported. So the next slide is just to show you, it is for growth and mastery data, um, the assessment schedule, so you'll know um when we give those assessments. I'd be happy to pause on this if you wanted to. So that bottom, that bottom all state required, we have zero control over that, but it's a hundred percent has to happen.
Um, so the district one, that's the STAR.
Correct, and there's reading. And it's treating. The great thing about STAR is it really doesn't take very long to administer.
I'm listening. But I thought English was on the stretch system too. English, science? Seems like there's three categories.
For um for the smarter balance assessment?
For the STAR test.
No, just reading. Yeah, yeah.
Just saw it last week.
Also, the state required assessments, they're actually federal required. States get to, states get to pick which, which ones they use, but there, there's a, there's a federal level requirement for testing.
So the walk-in is only teaching kindergarten, right? The lead is only for the language learners.
Yes.
The SBA is only a third through eight and ten. So every year, third through eight.
Yes.
Uh, law competence, science.
That's the law casting.
And that was only those grades. So really, it's not that much if you spread it out over the course of their, their twelve year. But it does feel.
It is, but it's challenging, you know, I, I think one of the challenges too with the, you know, stars, kind of your, it's definitely your practice test. We still want it to be the best so our teachers can get an accurate picture of where they're at. But you know, it's really kind of also fueling students that SBA is really like, try your best on this test, you know? And then this is after they've taken STAR, WE-DA. You know, there is, there is some fatigue there too, and you know, we have thirteen hundred of our students that are taking the WE-DA exam. And we go right up to that uh January, March window, and then we come back from spring break with SBA, you know, so it, it, it is a lot. Um, and I think the one, one thing was, it was nice not having SBA in some ways. Uh, during, and it, it, I'm not saying that because I'm not, I, we need the accountability. But there's ways that we can be accountable, and we're accountable through STAR, through district designated assessments where, where that we, we found just actually more useful in real time. But you know, if we do the SBA, we still use the data, we plan for the data, uh, we take it very seriously. Um, but yeah, your, your initial assessment of the assessments is, it is a lot. It's a lot of assessments.
So any other questions around that thing, seeing another view?
No, no, these, those assessments were just the content. So I guess what's missing in this map are all the other assessments. Like the, the school funding one, our service.
The service. Yes, so we do have another section to our strategic plan, which is the culture of safety and belonging. And in that section, we, you know, are really asking our students and our families um about, yeah. How do you know about?
Are we strategic and when we time those?
Yes, yeah, you'll get a whole, whole, a full update on that. And then I'm gonna be emailing you a copy of our um student survey as part of my board update, just so you can see what that looks like. And originally, that was seventy two questions, way too long. And, and even administrators, we get all that data back. What do you, what do you do with that? That's just too much. So we, we paired that, and that was the kids. The kids are like, it was really funny, because we asked the kids. And they're like, at twenty-five, I just start clicking. And I can read us some interviews. So our number is twenty-five. We will not, we, we got feedback from, from uh our administrators. They love some of these questions, like, no, we are not going more than twenty-five. I say with parents. You know, and I have four kids, and if I wanna do a survey, I have to fill out a seventy-two question survey. At fourth, or four, oh, there are three different ones, so our hundred and twenty, or sorry, two hundred, two hundred and ten questions.
Too many.
So anyway, that's a whole other thing, but, but we're, we're working on that too from the feedback we received.
So really, understanding why we look at growth and mastery and um what that actually means. There is a few things that I'd like to talk about. Um, we don't have to go into great detail, but the Walkman School improvement framework with it. Um, is uh how the state um keeps districts accountable, and again, this is federal. Requirement. Um, but we do, at, at the state level, determine these areas um that they monitor. Um, I just really wanted to point out that at K A, we, we have proficiency, which would be mastery in ELA and math, which is really this smarter balance assessment, um proficiency level at that three or four. Um, and then we have growth, which we're gonna talk about how they calculate that in a minute, but um, when you look at across that, that row, and you add up to a hundred percent, which is more important at the state, proficiency or growth? It's growth. They have weighted that as more important. So um growth, as we get there and talk about it, is really critical. And you'll see why they've um elevated that as we start to look at our data and we realize that kids are making growth. They will get to proficiency, and especially when you consider our multi-language learners, we'll talk about in just a minute. Um, there, there's impacts on that. Um, the EL progress is actually from the WE-DA assessment. And it's um that making progress that we're being seen on the second. And then the other indicators are um attendance, um mostly at K uh eight. At nine, twelve, you'll see graduations will be the biggest weight there. Um, the next would be their proficiency, and then EL progress is the same. They actually have fifteen percent on the student quality. And that includes um ninth grade success and our little credit participation as well, so. Those, that's how the state um identifies schools who and districts who need additional support. I just wanted to point out, um, when we're looking at Quincy data and comparing it to Washington State's data, and you're looking and you go onto the OSPI or, or, hey, Washington State has a little proficiency. Quincy has this level proficiency for math and ELA. I just want to point out that, you know, our, our demographics are a little bit different. Um, in state and in Quincy. Um, two categories that we have quite a few students in are multilingual learners. And that's quite complex as to why, and then students um that come from lower income families. Both of those categories traditionally have scored um less on the state assessment. Um, and when you compare the numbers of kids in Washington State versus Quincy in those two areas. Washington, um, for the multilingual learners, they have set almost seventy-five percent more non-multilingual learners and multilingual learners, right? Whereas we have um only seventeen percent more multilingual learners. Or yeah, non-multilingual learners, multilingual learners. So the point is that there is a lot more multilingual learners. Than in the state. Um, and you'll see that gap for low income, it's almost fifty-fifty in the state. Um, but we have considerably more low income than we do non-low income here in Quincy. And it's not an excuse, um, we really take seriously every student, but just to let you know that traditionally um, the outcomes have not been better for those students, and so we're really digging on how do we make the outcomes better? And when we look at what we've done here in Quincy, our outcomes for those student groups are better. Our gaps are smaller, and we, we do better for multilingual learners and uh students low income. But when you multiply that out for the total number of students who are proficient, that it's just a different landscape here in Quincy. So I just wanted to point that out.
And that has not always been the case here. So thi- this is significant progress over the last decade.
Yeah, yeah, we really did look at it and take it very seriously.
And I think one thing to expand on with the board, how, you know, I lean around and think about school, you know, we don't, we don't see that two percent. And, you know, we, we, we're happy to see that we're two, two point four percent higher than the state, you know, but we don't just say, well, that's good enough. It's, it's not good enough. We, we need to continually do improve the way that I think of school improvement. School improvement doesn't happen in big twenty-point jumps or thirty-point jumps. That's not how sustained that happens. Stains is, and this is research, and this is the way my boss and the, what, what, we work with our staff, our principals, it's sustained over time. It's a five to three percent jump, three years of a row, four years of a row. That's what we're looking for. I mean, if, if with the low income, if we're for one eight percent better, then next year, we're seven percent better. But that's the way that we're leading around this data. It is continual improvement. It would never arrive. Um, and, and that's the way that, that Allison and Victoria, our principals are leading with this too. So we're happy to see that we are outperforming, you know, the state MLs. We're happy to see that we're performing out from this, you know, of the rest of state low income students. But there's still a significant, yeah, yeah, between our non-MLS and our non-English language learners. And that's a big problem for us that we're, we're trying to fix and solve.
Um, we already talked about this, um, it's just a, you know, just great celebration that, you know, we are focusing on that, it's really exciting. Um, I wanted to point out to you where we were pre-pandemic averages for our smarter balance proficiency rate. So this is what we're calling mastery of proficiency, the whole three or four. Um, uh, going back since we have data for the current assessment, the smarter balance assessment back in twenty fourteen. If you take all of that pre-pandemic data, and you look at the averages over the years, that's what that pre-pandemic start is. So um that's the percentage of students who were at that three or four district wide in math and ELA pre-pandemic. Then you look what happened in the fall of twenty twenty-one, you know, the first time we gave the assessment again. Um, you know, after, during the pandemic, and then you look at um two springs ago, spring twenty twenty-two, we had quite a nice little recovery, and then we're continuing to recover as spring to May twenty-three. So you'll see, um, we've actually pretty much fully recovered in our ELA, which is really exciting. Um. But math, we are still not where we were pre-pandemic, and, you know, talking with local district leaders. I, I wish there was a magic solution that somebody else had. But we're all in the same boat that we just haven't recovered from pre-pandemic yet, and I know it's a national concern as well. The way that the standards go in ELA is, we call it spiraling, where they have similar standards in each grade. But K two is pretty specific to learn how to read, but once you get to third grade, um, you, you have really a lot of the same standards. They just get a little bit more complex text, a little bit, you know, harder uh comprehension. But it's just pretty much the same skills. In math, the skills from year to year really change. And so if you lose some math instruction in one year, and this data has been available way before the pandemic, they say if you lose two years of good math instruction, you might not ever catch up. That's been something that we've known for many years. But, you know, during that pandemic, that's exactly what we did. So um what we're really working on is how do we continue to teach grade level standard? Because we can't continue to get further behind, but then fill gaps at the different grade for the skills that students are missing. And because of the way the pandemic was, not every student misses the standards, skills. So you have to be very savvy to identify which standards to target for, for, for students. And we're doing this through student professional development, but it's not, it can't be only that. We, we do have students. Um, teachers pulling groups, um, so long, if you go into any um classroom, in math classroom, you'll see if you're in there at the right time, teachers working with longer students to identify skills, and we've got a lot of interventions, that's part of the program. But in addition to that, we have purchase programs um at K five, there's a program called Dreambox, that's a middle school. There's a program called I Ready. Um, these are online assessments that assess and practice skills at the same time. So they'll identify which standards you don't have. And they can go all the way back to the very beginning of math standards. They say, oh, this student doesn't have this skill, where this is a little lesson, it's, it's online. Yeah, so it.
I guess that was gonna be something like, personally, my, one of my kids, he was great at math. And then the pandemic happened, as math has never been the same. And so it's like, so how do you, like, do you survey each family? Which part of math did you get higher on COVID, you know? But it's good to know that you're working on figuring out which students are following those gaps, because like, for Cooper, it was fractions. He just has not recovered from fractions. I'm like, dude, your score was so good. Yes, and so it's like, it's good to know that you're working on finding those little gaps and correcting them now to hopefully help. Maybe, maybe we'll see a jump.
Well, we're hoping, and you know, pre-pandemic, there's a lot of cases where math was higher than our ELA, and a lot, a lot of breaks, you know, like in uh, and when I was a principal with um, Chris, and as a comedian, then we were all in, in, which that was before. We were always way higher in math. Uh, I mean, there wasn't so much language, but there's also a, there's so much language in the SBA or math. Uh, so you really need, you need the language skills because you need to have additional math skills. Uh, some of the I Ready, we're seeing some really good success at the middle school when our, that teachers that are using it. Uh, it's, it's, it's entry box, it's adaptive, um, you know, and.
And you can see the number of lessons up to a certain point. I mean, there's, there's a certain point where you just want a a student in front of a computer for very long, but up to a certain amount of lessons, you see the more lessons that they complete in a week, the higher that their STAR scores get to. And growth.
Son has done in the schoolroom.
From a parent perspective, it is like your spinach experience for the children.
It really is.
Something to do. Your experience, your spinach, you're ready.
Yeah, 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 it's gonna be great.
All right, so student growth percentages. Um, there are some kind of complex calculations to get to this, but this is how both STAR and smarter balance calculate growth. And it's in the context of calculating growth um based on a peer group or other students, so let's, let's look at one student. We're gonna call him Jack. Right, so Jack is a fifth grader on the start of twenty twenty-two, and he took SBA math, and he scored relatively high score. Then, at the end of sixth grade year in twenty twenty-three, Jack took the math SBA again, and he seemed to increase his score. Although Jack's score increased, there isn't an easy way to gauge how well he grew, how much he grew. Was it strong growth, moderate growth, weak growth compared to others? That's where SGP comes in, so. It turns out that Jack's SGP, student growth percentile was seventy-five, which means that compared to all the other students that he started with the same score with, Jack's growth was stronger than seventy-five percent of them. So this is what would be considered high growth. So we can say, you know, that little thought, Jack, increased in test score from fifth to sixth grade was better than seventy-five percent of students across the state who scored like him in fifth grade. So that's a comparison of the same academic period. So let's say in a parallel universe with different outcomes, that Jack may have scored a bit lower. So here, his score was actually a bit weaker, but he's still about an SGP of fifty, which means he grew more than fifty percent of students who scored like him in fifth grade previous year. This is an example of a perfectly typical growth. And let's say in a different parallel uh universe, um, different outcomes, Jack didn't do as well as, uh, didn't do as well and received an SGP of fifteen. Jack's growth between fifth and sixth grade test was only about a fifteen percent of students statewide, and this is an example of lower.
So the one thing that's, that I've always seen on growth versus proficiency, you can play a lot of proficiency games and games. And the district, you can really pat yourself on the back for, you know, a subset of your students getting proficient. Of course, we all are proficient. But even with those proficient, those students scoring proficiency, are they still growing? Do they, do they grow from one year to the next? You know, you can still get a three on the SBA, but not show growth compared to a like peer. Um, you know, in, on the west side or in Spokane. So when we look at low, medium, or, or, or high growth, what we're really looking at is on the individual level, are all our kids showing growth? Are all our kids making progress? Because you can have, like I said, if you have the proficiency students, not making any growth.
Yeah, and it's really.
Still get a three and high five and say we're doing great.
And it's funny the way the test opens, it's probably way too technical, but every year in order to get proficient, but what's called the scale score increases a little bit. So let's say Jack got twenty-five hundred on the fifth grade, and then the next year, he got twenty-five oh one. Yay, you went up in scale score, but actually, he probably went down because the level, the cutoff level. So it, it can be very dangerous to not look at growth. Um, so that I'm very thankful.
And then you also, you know, like, growth, you can, you know, you can really, what it's, with subsgroups, like your students with disabilities or your students in the ML program, and completely ignore them. Because I'm so focused on this, I'm so focused on this, these proficiency or these almost proficiency students, to hit them to proficiency. And some of our multilingual learners, or students with disabilities are so far away from proficiency, you know? It, it, because it takes a while for them to grow. When we just focus that proficiency, you know, schools were rewarded really for ignoring those students. And, and that's not what we do. It really was.
That's emotional for kids.
Yes.
When they're not at proficiency, hey buddy, you made a lot of growth this year, you know, you're getting closer. Yes, absolutely.
And motivating teachers. Okay, so um statewide, these are, this is actual, are actually our data. Um, there's a, there's a typical growth range, so if you think of, you know, a third, a third, a third, the low growth range of anywhere from zero to thirty-three point three percent. The typical growth range is thirty-three point four percent to sixty-seven point six percent, and then the high is sixty, the sixty-six point seven percent and above. So typical growth is that, that band um in the middle. And you can see that line where the fiftieth percentile again, if we're comparing ourselves to all the students, all across the state. The average for each um, each grade level is here. And you'll notice there's only fourth bit, six, seven, and eight, because the trick with student um percent, or the SGP, the student growth percentile is you have to have two of the exact same tests in a row. So you have to take the math test last year and then the math test again this year to be compared. And there is no ninth grade test, so we'll never get SGP data for tenth grade, unfortunately, which is such a bummer. And it starts in fourth grade because you have to take the test first of the third grade, so that's why it's that fourth through eight. For the smarter balance, but we do have the data for our STAR assessment, so we can track it all the way through, which is really cool. And it's very important. So um we are in that typical growth range. Um, well, this was math, um, and then this was ELA. Uh, I just wanted to point out for STAR, we, we, we can look at growth and execute the community bar, which is really a little important than you do. We can also in STAR, we can have so many data points over the, over the years. When, I mean, this is a real student, remember middle school, I was a sixth grader. And you can see all the scores that you ever taken since you started to get in STAR, and you can see, those little red dots means that he was at you know, the level one, which is the lowest proficiency level. Um, for quite a long time, pretty much since he's been taking it. But then last, you know, January, when he took it, he actually, something clicked. He jumped up, and now he's up in that range, that's, that's a proficient mark. So you can see that with a lot of our students, that they're growing, 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 but still one. But they're making growth over time, and we'll, we'll get there, and there may be growth. Now, what you don't wanna see is flat, and you don't wanna see down, obviously, but um, you know, we can intervene early and impeach assessment of this data. So any questions about all that data?
So on those ones, on the STAR testing, because they are given more frequently.
Yes.
What if you have that student that really does actually struggle with the tests, or is being impacted by something in his day?
Yeah.
Or day that just makes their score horrible? Because it is a district test, right? Like, we're only doing that within. Are we able to? Let me take it again.
Yes, yes. So there is a window that it will automatically upload to our system that we look at the data over time in. Um, but if they take it outside of that window, it won't automatically upload, we'll have to go in this system and actually grab it. Uh, but this, this chart um from the actual STAR Renaissance, you can pull at any data point from any assessment they took, so. Usually, if a teacher, you know, sees it's way low, and you totally tank, you know, the kid, whatever, they can just re-get it right away, that's fine.
Right away, or can they? Yeah, okay. And is that something that maybe we could even like have that conversation with the students? Like, are they having those conversations? Are they aware that, hey, I see you're having a bad day, and your STAR results show that, would you like to take this again? It's like, because it is valuable for us as a district to see that line, but you just one drop down, and you're like, what?
That's one thing that I respect about STAR is we can get them multiple times. It's, it's, it's much shorter than SBA.
Yeah.
Is, what a three-hour session.
I guess I would just, I would encourage that that be something that is communicated with students, and, and you probably are, but I'm just.
No, I think that's great feedback.
Yeah, and it's the, the teams, like the, we take the data really seriously. So our teams are looking at the data, and no teacher wants to have.
No, sure, yeah.
So we definitely, there's vigilance, like, wait, that's not what I see in class, and that's not right, so let's.
I know, I know.
Right, oh yeah, and that's how I find out.
How long they spent on the test.
Yeah.
And so we know this, that it was a real type of pass through, that's also a red flag for perhaps we wanna sit down and try this one more time.
That's playful for the teachers, because I do think that most of them are very vigilant, and they know they're individual students and, and their capacities. So I, I think they have really great teachers in that, it's just, I'm, you're doing a great job.
I think like my son still has a version of it through the fastest, uh, it was math test at the time.
Oh, math.
What, like, three, five seconds?
No, I think it's like a tenth of a test.
Any other questions?
I hadn't brought incentives. Back in the day, there used to be incentives associated to assessments. Is that still being done or not really?
So, some different schools have tried some different things. So, some different schools have tried some different things, our middle school got really creative a couple of years ago and um. They said, you know, this STAR assessment is obviously really important, it's super predictive on how they're gonna do on the state, um. Some of them assessment, so they um did a little competition, so all the E L A. Teachers um agreed that they would um have a competition between classes and whichever classes had the most growth. Then they would get um a like a little trophy. Between, you know, it was really important to the E L A teachers, so they were taking it seriously, some teachers, students were taking it seriously and um we have a really great. We have really great instructional coaches and the one at the middle school um met with the E L A teachers and did goal setting around the data. And so it was really powerful for them to to be able to look at the data and be rewarded, it's like, and then make. Instructional decisions and plans based on what they said. And so, again, more motivation for the teachers to motivate students to wanna do it and and um. Yeah, that was kind of a big deal, like at that.
I know, like with SBA, move your elementary schools, you know, for. In May, generally, you'll see clashing doors decorated, like younger grades will come up. And decorate the upper grade stores that are having to take this assessment and wish them the luck and bring them snacks and it's. Really, they really try to make it a positive experience and um often they'll do uh, they'll get, you know. You know, the the students are trying, they'll get, you know, so many cars and they get so many cars, sort of working hard on the test. They get um, you know, an extra recess, generally everybody gets an extra recess, but. But like getting a care card for working hard really cues them that this is the test that's important. Or they'll be in auto pops or at the elementary, at at middle school, they do more like another class competition.
Yeah.
And I think those incentives started when the Wassel first.
Yeah.
Which um, which was not for a couple of years, I think, required of students to take.
So there were incentives to get them to take it, now, then it then it became required and that was the end of the incentives.
I had a DNA for those and they they turned out to be a verbal violation because they had. Uh, the students who passed the test, they gotta go to somebody cool. And the students that didn't, they had to stay back, so everybody knew who the students that passed and everybody that didn't. Which, which is a, uh, it is a, uh, it's a pretty significant violation.
That's horrible.
Yeah, so we really tried to just. Yeah, yeah, so we really just tried to pump them up to cue them, because again, they have to take some work days, they could leave a test, which is, you know, I'm a. Fourth grader, I don't know what test is important and what isn't, you know, and so, yeah, it's it's a challenge to.
Is the, is the test schedule communicated to parents with testing something?
Uh, yes.
I think I know, well, no one might.
Yeah, maybe not for STAR, but the smarter balance, you should get definitely notification, um, but I don't know.
Generally STAR isn't, but SBA is communicated.
The STAR is really pretty most things, you know, in that.
It is quick.
And it's quick, but yeah.
Like my, I don't know the two, I'm the the younger two, I don't know my. I don't cook with that, because I put, she puts it in her weekly newsletter, but yeah. I guess that would be something to that, would it help the the families knew ahead of time, hey, make sure that they're eating, they're sleeping, they're encouraged, they're.
I usually, yeah.
Yeah, so easy to do that, just to really emphasize. We're trying to make this a positive experience and then they can get some positivity at home, which also would return.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know smaller schools, they'll, they'll actually send like a little um. Like you're maybe by a corner home to this parents and say, okay, can you write like a little encouragement, like over there to us, it was different, like.
Yeah. I'll I'll grab my kids.
Yeah.
I know what is happening.
Yeah, exactly.
Would that add though, just like testing anxiety?
Um, I didn't hear that from the students. Also, the parent, because like I know one of my kiddos, when he's stressed, he does test horribly, but if I knew that the testing was coming up, I would. Better protect him for that day emotionally, you know, like, hey.
That would be a good idea to cross the board, but I think a lot more parents just, you better pass this test or else.
Yeah, I worry about that too.
You've met my parents? I think it's how we communicate it out too, I think we did.
Yeah, I think it was.
We used to, we used to communicate, you know, that that these are the best practices, lots of sleep.
Yeah.
Just want, or we want our kids to try their best, um. But, yeah, and this, you know, like you said, it's different for different kids even, you know, within our house, you know, I have. One that is all about test take, even the other, if I mention it to them, they get. Pretty severe anxiety around it, so I have to be really delicate, even within the house sometimes.
Uh, so to the key performance indicator, to the dashboard finally, um, to the dashboard, um, so. We use the K P I, the key performance indicator, and the idea behind K P I is it's. The 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 most important satellite data metric. That we decide for each of our five goal areas that we want to look at as a district. So um, there are a couple of K P I's that we look at in, really, really each of the goal areas, we're looking at growth. Primarily, and we're looking at mastery and um, and of course, we've already talked about, it's updated more frequently in the state and we have a program called Home Room that um. We use to capture all of our student data, um, and uh, we can really easily pull reports to be able to. Not always easily, I shouldn't say really easily, depending on what we decide, we how we wanna see it and visualize it. There's a lot of work sometimes on home, home room to build it the way that we want to see it, so just know that, I'm gonna show you some examples, um, these types of feedback, probably before, so. So it it looks generally like this, um. We came to the school board with some ideas, when was that? I don't know, a couple of years ago, but yeah, I think in October, yeah. Um, but you're right, first probably about a year ago. And then the last one. Um, the request was, you know, it would be nice if you're an elementary parent to be able to just go into the elementary day and you don't have to sift for all the other K P L data, so. What we're thinking right now, we could build a K twelve. Way to get in, see all the K twelve data, and then in elementary, only see elementary data, and then the middle school, you can see that data. See that data, so you click on that, let's say you selected middle school. Then you get each of the five goal areas and you could select growth and mastery of priority standards. And then there are three outcomes in our growth and mastery of priority standards, we haven't decided. Clearly on a K P I for hope, I'm not sure when or if that will get there, but we do have for growth and mastery, so if we select growth. There are some ways to visualize this, um, that I wanna talk through with you. Um, so growth, if you remember, the student growth percentiles, SGP is for our smarter balance assessment. You have to have two years in a row of data before you have one student growth percentile accounted for. So we had two years, we have the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, so we have one student growth percentile for. Like for each student that was fourth through eighth grade. Before the pandemic, because there were gaps, we didn't have any data available and we have it since twenty eighteen, nineteen school year. So right now we have really old student of percentile data pre-pandemic and we have this one from last year. Now, moving forward, we will have, assuming. And then we take the test every year, we will have growth data, so I just wanted to show you what it could look like when you have two points of data. I'm not suggesting that we start next year by sharing pre-pandemic data, I think we probably wanna share our baseline data, which was really last year. And then move forward, but I'm definitely don't see your ideas. But, basically what this will look like over time is that you'll see each time we get student growth percentile data, a different. Bar going up and the bar is the average for all the students in that grade level, so this is our real data, first, sixth grade, math, SBA, SGP. Pre-pandemic and then this last SGP. And the lines are students um that are from. Two student groups that we really examined carefully because we have found in lots of data reviews. That these two student groups tend to have disproportionate data outcomes. And we really wanna focus in with our teachers and our students to support these students, so we don't want them to get lost in the hall. So when we think about our multilingual learners and our students with disabilities, this growth. These are two different data sets, I want you to know, so it's not the same students. Okay, it's just sixth grade in twenty eighteen, and sixth grade in twenty twenty, so it's not the same students. But we could, we, what we'd like to do is once we have multiple years of data, we could show. Okay, this is just sixth grade year over year, so you can see the same, and then. What we can't, what we can't do yet, but we're working with Home Room on, but was the request last time, so I wanna make sure that's still, because it's gonna take some work to do. Is have a cohort data, so you'd show this data for just all sixth grade from any one time started. Versus you could show. How the grade level did in as fifth graders, the grade level did as sixth graders, the grade level did seventh graders, you know, and track the same kids over time.
Okay.
And the reason it's hard to build is because they build this from one assessment type of smart mouse. Um, for good grade, and that's kind of a data set, but when you put in different data set, they have fifth grade, sixth grade, and has a fifth map, and so it's hard for them to. It's a different logic for running for them, so we're working with them to hopefully build it, but. I just wanted to get feedback from you that we like this type of visualization for the data, because once we decide. You know, we wanna be consistent, reliable with how we report data to the public and to you, um. So what do you guys think of this type of visualization?
What's the metric of the percentages? That's a percentage where I can't read it.
Oh, sorry, so what, thank you for asking that, that's really important to this conversation, so. What we really want is students that are making typical or high growth. We really don't want students to be making low growth compared to the state. So you know how I said they're relatively thirty thirty, so if we're making these typical or high growth. That's about sixty seven percent of, you know, compared to the state would be making typical or high growth, we want. To be beating that, we wanna be above sixty seven percent of students making typical or high growth. Um, so that's that kind of baseline that we want more than that.
I think this is easier to read than what we looked at.
Before, right, with all the graphics tables, I think that was really hard, but they just always, you know, for.
A question for you about cohort information. I mean, is that useful to teachers?
Yes, um, cause if you are a, you know. Sixth grade teacher and you're looking at your incoming students. You, it would, it's helpful to know how your students did last, how those students did last year and and maybe. And therefore, yeah. We do see some dip in cohorts.
A difference.
Yeah.
Are you only gonna, are you? In the platform, are you only gonna look down as narrow as cohorts or are you just doing individual students?
So in the dashboard, it's for the public. Yes.
Oh, and you will have access by according to each student.
Interesting.
Teachers have access, yeah, teachers have access to that, absolutely, yeah, teachers have all the, you know, individual student level access for their classes.
Hmm. What would be the value, just to think about it, what would be the value of the public having that cohort data?
So if 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 you have cohort data, you're actually following your kid through time. So let's say you have a sixth grader. You're looking at cohort data from, you know, the third, fourth grade, so fourth, fifth and sixth grade, with your kids' group of students, how they may grow. Versus if you have a sixth grader and you go into the sixth grade data, you're looking at different kids each time.
They're different. Or with disabilities.
If, um, different cohorts have different amounts of students that are capable of level or some.
And especially. It wouldn't be separated according to that.
Well, so you you could see that, so see how like.
See that.
It's so different between grade levels to the different students, but. What we wanna see if it's the same cohort is that we'd expect to see our students with disabilities and multilingual learners. Having similar trajectories and not all over the place because they're different kids.
Right, so as a, as a parent or public going, picking a cohort. That they assume is including their child.
Yes.
Is that also including multilingual learners and disabilities could potentially also be part of that cohort?
Absolutely, all the kids that are in your grade level, absolutely.
I think as long as they can sense this large. Yeah. So in our multilingual learners have a pretty big cohort, you know, by grade band, but I will be thoughtful. Depending on some grade that you may not have as many students with disabilities, you wanna be sure to um honor. The individuality, so just always.
Not identifying this building.
Yeah.
Yeah. During that, and now they'll even do that at the state, although instead of, because a certain group of students is below a certain number. They don't want, have you said that because that.
Sure.
With this data, uh, we're not giving you by school, it's at a grade level, you will always have, will always have um specialized. Usually it's the, our, our Native American. Um, black.
Yeah, some of the other. Or by building, you know.
We'll, we'll see the percentage for all the public.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's an average um grade size? You know, how many students on overall, per grade generally?
Maybe about two thirty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Middle school, high school have really big classes right now, they're about two. Sixty, two seventy, but then elementary, they just kinda tamer off to this really consistent, two thirty, two forty.
Um, I've been personal works with data frequently, and then also, I remember as a student. I always find it interesting that when people knew my grade was the bad grade, how people would treat us. So that's just one potential step, when it comes out of cohorts, versus like, oh no, class of twenty twenty seven, so. This is it, this is the year, look at their day, it's gonna be the best, worst year, yes, so that's one thing to consider, and the other one is. How the community would perceive that information and even consider non-come-in infancy because of that. Either choosing private school or homeschool because it is.
They're gonna get dropped.
Possibly poor.
Well, we also, can we play around with both looks, you know, and see if they can build them out?
Yeah, yeah, I I know Camille um has been working in the home room, I know the request is in to make the um cohort data, but.
But we can certainly do that, you're up to.
For sure.
And that, that makes, that makes, does that, does that make sense with board?
Yes.
From a public perspective?
Yeah.
Yes, I think for teachers, there's value put onto our cohort data, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Public.
Okay.
I probably worry about that.
And probably for the board to know cohort data in town. And Dan, I could, I never thought you guys were the bad class.
Our class, it was a great after all.
So that's growth and how it can look, um, if you went into mastery, then you would see the, you know, percentage of mastery again of all, and we have this data over time. Um, and you can see, again, not cohort data, so it's not the same kids on this one, but you can see. This is sixth grade percent mastery year over year. And you can see that pretty significant dip in my. Of twenty one and um, and then there's that. Every grade level looks different.
Go back to, yeah, that can really affect even his perspective in college recruitment. Like, is, is those recruiters considering a student and they see that that student was part of a cohort that's lower or whatever?
I don't, I don't think so, no, I I know some finance counselors of. Uh, well, community high schools and they really go after the individual, what is. What is your path that looks like, they, they really.
Yeah, it's more of an individualized.
Or individualized.
A whole group of people.
Right. Yeah, they're not, they're not looking at your. Your, your cohort, they look at the schools, or like, you know, becoming from a. Or she's just private school, you know, sometimes that is showing some inequities in the college acceptance process, which is, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's still, gives people an opportunity to label a group of kids.
I think our district is small enough to consider non-English. It is a small.
On a public level.
On a public level, I still value for.
On the backend of a board dashboard, but not on a public dashboard.
Personally, that would be good.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
So really, that's really thoughtful.
Okay, um, and we already talked about these, so we currently create charts, um, for growth and mastery for both STAR and the SBA using this kind. Um, idea, but we can't do cohort data at the time, but are, am I hearing that we don't want to build that right now?
I think we should build it.
Try to build it, okay.
Just for the board.
Just for the board.
Yeah, okay. Got it.
Uh, yeah, definitely.
Yes, yeah. Okay. Any questions about that or really anything that I've shared tonight?
I just appreciate the comments.
Thank you for your ongoing work on this. Thank you, I'll be yours, thank you.
I appreciate it. I, you know, just personally, I still have to think about growth percentiles. It is still confusing, uh, I, I think this is one of the best. Um, simple, this most simplistic way that I've seen it work, I understand it the first time I'm thinking about it, so I really appreciate. Thank you. You know, stretch play, are we okay? You know, keep going.
I think um.
So we were, so we're gonna next, we're going into a session showing you a data here with.
You are. I know, I was looking to make sure that. No, I I created one, but I didn't bring the page, thank you.
Of my evaluation.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, meeting's adjourned.
Or are you, are we recording? Yep, we're recording. And, and go over there.
The meeting's adjourned.
Perfect. Yeah.